Dave, your watch, are we good?
Yeah, it's a good watch. Leslie did say she might be a little bit.
All right, I'd like to call to order the November 8, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Daigle has an excused absence. She may show up tardy.
All right, we'll be retiring to close session here momentarily. Is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment regarding the closed session agenda as it is printed in the agenda material that's previously been distributed? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to close session. Well, Councilmember Curry.
Sorry, sorry.
Do we know where Leslie is?
What?
Yeah, I know.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the November 8, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Do we have a, do we have a closed session report?
We do not have a closed session report this evening.
All right. If we can all stand, please for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Daigle. And stay standing for the invocation by Pastor Jeff Priest of the Mariners Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, we just ask your blessing on tonight. We thank you for, we thank you for the beautiful city that we live in, and we never take that for granted, how you blessed us with such a wonderful place. I pray for those who are here tonight. I just pray that you'll just help them to speak with clarity and just, I pray that you'll just give them the words to say as you put something on their heart and you give them a passion, God, and I just pray that you'll just give them the pieces they share. And I pray for the council members as they listen, Lord, that you will just give them wisdom as they listen and you will guide and direct them as they make decisions tonight. I thank you, Lord, for this process. Thank you for the privilege that we can come and we can pray and then we could listen and make, and make the right decisions, Lord, to bless others and bless our city. We, we ask your blessing on tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we, we actually have two presentations this evening. One not on the agenda, but I'd like to just go ahead and put it in anyway. And that is, we have the mayor of Huntington Beach with us this evening, Mr. Joe Carcio. And Joe is here to make a presentation to us, I think, regarding the Reagan statue. Joe, please come on up. And welcome to Newport Beach.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Joe Carcio. I'm the mayor of Huntington Beach, and thank you very much. And I was saddened last, to learn last week that the newly unveiled statue of our beloved President Ronald Reagan had been severely damaged by vandals. Hopefully that these individuals will soon be apprehended and swiftly prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. However, I do want to present both to you, mayor and city council members, proclamation from the city of Huntington Beach concerning, concerning the event. It was a small token of appreciation from our city in honoring the 40th president, our beloved Ronald Reagan. If you allow me to read the proclamation, I'd really appreciate that, sir. And the proclamation says, "On February 23, 2011, the city of Newport Beach City Council voted to commission memorial to the former President Ronald Reagan in honor of what would have been his 100th birthday. Memorial was designed to honor the memory and lasting contributions of our 40th president, who served from 1981 to 1989 and died in June of 2004. The memorial was developed and built using private donations, and the statue was sculpted and created by a local Newport Beach artist, Marion Baker, and was placed in Bonita Canyon Sports Park in Newport Beach. Ceremony to unveil the Ronald Reagan's centennial memorial was held October 9, 2011, with the dedication featuring music and guest speakers. So now therefore, I, Joe Carcio, mayor of Huntington Beach, on behalf of our city council, recognize the city of Newport Beach for their dedication to our 40th president of the United States and congratulate them for all their beautiful memorial. So I'd just like to present this to you, mayor, and I want to take special thanks to my friend and councilmember Keith Curry.
We should get Councilman Hill down here, too. He's an alumni. That's happened quite joyous as well.
Can, can the rest of you hold down the fort while I'm here?
What about the rest of us?
Okay, good. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation regarding the Orange County Sanitation District's Ocean Outfall Project. OCSD Assistant General Manager Jim Herbert is here to discuss the Ocean Outfall Repair Project, which consists of maintenance work at the beach box located across the marsh from their Huntington Beach plant. He is here to explain what this project means to Newport Beach and how OCSD plans to mitigate the impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel. As many of you are aware, the Orange County Sanitation District collects and treats and discharges or delivers wastewater to the Orange County Water District. The wastewater generated by two and a half million people in central and northern Orange Counties, covering 21 cities and three special districts, sanitary districts and water districts. We do that using 579 miles of collection sewer pipes and 15 pumping facilities. A number of them are here in Newport Beach on the peninsula in this area. And two treatment plants. The wastewater is conveyed either to our treatment plant in Fountain Valley or Huntington Beach plant right at the mouth of the Santa Ana River in Huntington Beach. About half of the wastewater is treated at each of those two treatment plants. And I want to talk tonight about the two outfalls. This white line that kind of goes out in dog legs, that's a five-mile-long, 10-foot diameter concrete pipe that has a diffuser, about a half-mile-long diffuser on the end of it, 200 feet deep below the Pacific Ocean. And this little dog leg here is our standby ocean outfall, and that weighs in on this discussion as well. I'll talk about that a little bit more. As I mentioned, we treat wastewater from two and a half million people, and right now that equates to 210 million gallons every day. About 60 to 70 million gallons of that every day is recycled by the Orange County Water District through the groundwater replenishment system project. They take that through reverse osmosis and ultraviolet light, high purity treatment, and it's then used to either inject into the groundwater basin and keep saltwater from intruding into our wells, or it's percolated in the Anaheim-Forbey area where it recharges the groundwater basin. But the rest of it, about 150 million gallons a day, has to be discharged. And there's one outfall that we've been using continuously since 1971 or '72, which is our 120-inch diameter five-mile outfall. It was that long dog leg that I pointed to. It's one of the most critical pieces of infrastructure in the county, if you think about it. All of the wastewater for two and a half million people has to go through that pipe, so it has to be maintained in good condition 24/7. We also have an emergency outfall. It's a one-mile outfall. The 120-inch outfall is about 40 years old. The one-mile outfall is smaller, has a smaller capacity. It only goes a mile out in the ocean, and it was in use up until 1971, and it's over 50 years old. It was built in the 1950s. And one thing I want to mention, when I talk about the wastewater that the sanitation district treats and then some of it we discharge out into the ocean, it's now secondary-treated wastewater. If those of you remember back, about eight years ago, there was a big debate about whether we should have a waiver from full secondary treatment or treat to full secondary standards. The water that we're discharging now and that we're going to be discharging in 2012 when this project goes forward is much cleaner than what we did historically. It probably has about one-fourth of the microscopic suspended solid material in it today than it did just a couple of years ago. So why are we doing this project? Again, I mentioned that we have this critical facility that has to operate 24/7 and has to be completely reliable. That's the ocean outfall. It's 40 years old, and we do continuously inspect and repair that pipeline, both onshore and offshore. The project I'm going to talk about are some critical repairs we need to make onshore within Plant Number Two and then on the beach near the parking lot by the state beach. We did some additional inspection and rehabilitation the last couple of years and found that we do need to do some work. We need to get into the pipe, dry it out and look at it, and we need to prevent system failures and spills. We have to fix the pipe before it breaks. We don't want to have to be responding to, to a spill out there due to corrosion. So if we look at the facility, this is an aerial view. This is looking from Newport Beach into Huntington Beach across the Santa Ana River. And you see these two large towers that are sort of landmarks out there when you drive by the treatment plant. Those are surge towers. And each of the two outfalls has a surge tower. This is our normal five-mile outfall that we use day in and day out, and we call this surge tower number two. And it needs to be painted and coated and repaired. We need to dry out this pipeline all the way down to what we call the beach box here, so that we can get inside, do inspections and do repairs. We haven't been able to drain that and isolate that for decades to get in there to do that kind of work. The structure here that we call the beach box has some metal covers in it. Think of them as pressure manhole covers that, that hold back the wastewater. They're metal and they've been there since, for 40 years. And we did do some surface thickness testing. We know that there's corrosion there. So we're going to go inside that box and rebuild the inside of it so that it's good for another, at least 20, 25 years, that we don't have to worry about it. At the same time, we're going to replace the old flow meters. We have an ultrasonic meter that measures the wastewater flow out each day. It's now getting to where it's 15 years old and needs to be replaced with a new meter. We're going to abandon the old meter ports. Again, inspect and repair that beach junction box, which I think is the highest-risk part of this project that we really need to take care of. And then do some work to what we call pipe risers. They're, they're metal sections of pipe that are sort of manhole shafts that, again, have been out there for 40 years and need to be rehabilitated and recoded. There's two ways that we can get this line dry. And the first alternative that we looked at is what we call the bypass alternative. And through, with this alternative, what we would do is we would move our wastewater over into our standby pipe, the one-mile outfall on the land section here, build a bypass structure, and then join our five-mile outfall again. With this alternative, we can dry it up, do the repairs we need, and not have to utilize the standby outfall. Doing that, we have to order valves and build this big structure. There's a lot of cost associated with that, and it would probably extend the project by a couple of years. So it has some advantages and some drawbacks. Alternative number two is the non-bypass alternative. And you see this red line. What we would do is we would place our one-mile outfall line into service for three to six weeks while we did the work. And it fixes the, the project gets done sooner. We would have it done in fall of 2012. However, it requires us discharging one mile offshore instead of four and a half miles offshore. Again, I mentioned that we have cleaner effluent than we've had in the past, and it would be disinfected with bleach to reduce the bacteria. And both of those alternatives are going to be explored in the environmental impact report, which will be released to the public in a couple of weeks. And we plan on certifying that in January. So the beach box, that structure that I talked about, this is the, the mouth of the Santa Ana River. This is looking out towards the coast. This is located at the state beach, just south of the bike path near the bridge, the Pacific Coast Highway Bridge. This is the structure that we need to get into. We lift these large concrete covers off, enter that box, rebuild the inside of it, as I mentioned, and hopefully then it's good for another 25 years. But again, to get inside there, we have to dry it out and either bypass the flow or discharge out the 78-inch outfall. So when we do this environmental impact report, we've already released the notice of preparation. We've gotten comments from agencies, the city of Newport Beach included. We're going to look at water quality impacts. We're going to look at water quality impacts. So if we put our treated wastewater a mile offshore, what does that do to the water quality? What does that do to the marine environment? What are some of the potential problems that we could have there because we're releasing water to this location that hasn't been really put into service in the last 30 years, 40 years? We're doing technical studies that will be included in the EIR, ocean current modeling to show what happens to the plume, what's the fate of that plume of wastewater once it's discharged? Does it come onshore? Will it cause a plankton bloom, you know, a red tide because we're putting this stuff closer to shore? We're really, that location I showed for where that junction structure is, it's right next to the lease turn sanctuary there that's fenced in. So we have a very short window that we can work. We want to get this work done before the rainy season when our flows come way up, but we have to do it outside the nesting season. So that gives us a very short, tight window that we have to get this work done in. The lease turn is out there, the snowy plover, and there's rare plant, the wooly head, I guess is a rare plant that's out there that's significant that we'll have to mitigate for and avoid. On the state beach, we're looking at aesthetics. We're going to have construction out there. We have to access the construction site through the bike trail, so we'll have to do some temporary closures. Beach parking accessibility, if we impact the parking lot, you can see that in the lower right-hand corner there. And again, beach water quality. Does this plume have the opportunity, would it come back onshore and impact beach water quality? If we were doing de-watering out there, have construction runoff, would that have an adverse effect on the beach? Again, I talked about access and aesthetics. You can see this picture. It shows a large piece of equipment. This is actually the bypass valve that we would install if we did the bypass option. Noise. To get this work done and minimize the amount of shutdown and minimize the risk, we're going to be working 24/7. So light and glare, traffic, we'll have to mitigate for that, put up barriers and use equipment that has mufflers and things to try to minimize the potential impact to the community. The notice of preparation was released in August. We did receive comments on that. The draft EIR will go out in a couple of weeks. We want to have that certified by our board in January. It may fall into February of 2012. And again, we have that construction window that we have to hit in fall of 2012. If we go with that bypass option, that involves a lot more elaborate construction, that would delay it a couple of years because we have to have a lot of custom valves and tapping equipment manufactured, and that wouldn't be done until around the winter of 2014. That concludes my report, and if there are any questions, I could take those.
So, Jim, assuming that we did not use the valve bypass but use the one-mile outfall, when would you expect that effluent to be going through the one-mile outfall? At what time of the year?
Oh, the time of the year would be in September or October timeframe.
Past the summer?
Past the summer. And the number of beach tenants drops off to like a third of what it is in the summertime. It drops off drastically. It'd be in that timeframe. It would be disinfected, secondary effluent. It's much cleaner than we've had in the past. And we're doing the modeling work right now to show if there is any impact on the beach in terms of bacteria. Our goal is to disinfect it to the point where it wouldn't elevate the bacteria levels at the beach.
Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
City Manager. The draft EIR, who's looking at it for us? Aside from Dr. Skinner?
I know Dr. Skinner is. Actually, Jim, you've met with Dr. Skinner or he has with the staff, and I think he ended up concluding this was okay, at least from his perspective.
We met with-
I'm answering Councilmember Gardner's question.
We met with Dr. and Mrs. Skinner about it and talked to them about it. And he's pretty much okay with it. I think he's in favor.
I think he's waiting for a study or you're having somebody look at it?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
And I spoke with Jack yesterday. We're having an expert come in tomorrow, and then he'll report back out to Jack and give him his opinion.
Okay.
There isn't a person designated on staff to look at it, and we could, but-
Well, no, if Dr. Skinner's looking at it and we're talking to him, that's fine.
Well, Councilman Rosansky's our board member. I didn't know if he'd be looking at it.
Well, I actually asked for this presentation so that we could all understand what may occur and may not occur. I mean, clearly, to the extent that you're going to be using the shorter outfall and there may be some impacts to our beach, or fortunately Joe's already left, but to his beach in Huntington Beach, I mean, we'd be concerned about that. I mean, especially if it was occurring during the summer. I mean, we're, at least it's going to be in the off-season. And we're only, I think your presentation, you said three to six weeks, something like that?
Yes. It would be a three to six week thing.
So it's a limited time period, but definitely would be of concern. I mean, we want to have beach closures and things like that. It's not going to bode well for Newport Beach if that would be the situation. So we, you know, I've got my valves on it, but I'm no environmental expert, and certainly to the extent that we have people on staff that are more capable than I, I would hope that we're looking at it and making whatever appropriate comments are necessary.
We'll look at the staff level and see about that. I haven't, just haven't designated someone yet and probably need to.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, with the bypass, I mean, is there, aside from the fact that it would take longer and probably be a lot more expensive to do it that way, isn't there some benefit there from a redundancy standpoint of having the bypass in case you needed it for something else in the future?
You know, it would be, here's what that bypass might look like. There's sort of a schematic of it. It's a large, above-ground, these valves, they probably stick up, what, Pam Kester, our project manager, 30, 40 feet up in the air, something like that?
The thing with the gray?
Ma'am, why don't you come down?
You'll need to come up because no one at home can hear you. Yeah, thanks.
There's a better picture. This is what the valve would look like when it's installed. I think it's 40 feet tall.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, I'm sorry, 55 feet tall. So what we would propose is installing that for the duration of the construction and then dismantling it and moving it off.
So it wouldn't remain afterwards?
It wouldn't remain. We would probably leave the flanges there so that we could reinstall the bypass if we needed it.
Would you step to the microphone, please? Step to the podium there. Yeah, there we go. Why don't you repeat your name? Give us your name, please.
That, okay.
Ma'am, your name?
Pamela Kester. I'm the project manager from Orange County Sanitation District.
Thank you, dear.
For this. This shows the bypass, and what remains when we are done doing this construction is only the green pipe and the red that you see there. Everything else has to come off because in order to construct this, we have to go into the lease turn area with the excavation, and we have de-watering wells and all that. So you just can't leave that forever. You have to get that out of there after you're done, when the lease turns come back in, into their nesting area.
So the brown portions would be below grade? Is that accurate?
Yes. Yes. And the gray that you see above is all, has to be removed, and also the cylinders there have to be removed as well, so that you don't see anything on the beach, you know, when we're done. Not to mention, we have to, when we go into the lease turns and we're done with this, we take the pipes out that I mentioned, and then we have to put the fence back where it was before. So we return the habitat to its original condition.
I know those lease turns, they hate pipes.
Yeah. Them and the snowy plovers.
I'll trade you some gnat catchers.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions here?
Jim, you mentioned secondary treatment. For the benefit of the public, can you explain what you mean by that or what secondary treatment is?
Sure. In conventional wastewater treatment, like we do at this Orange County Sanitation District and the other treatment plants around, there's really three levels of wastewater treatment that they talk about. Primary treatment, which is a settling process, and we do advanced primary treatment where we add some iron salts to help it settle out. So advanced primary treatment, and that removes around 75% of the suspended solids in the wastewater. You have secondary treatment, which is a biological process after that. And at that point, you remove around 90% of the material in the wastewater. It's much cleaner. And that's the level that we're going to. Tertiary treatment is the final, like filtration step that you'd use if you were going to recycle the water for irrigation. So we're doing second, we're upgrading to full secondary treatment, much cleaner than what we did in the past.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Rosansky? No? All right. Thank you very much.
I'm sure I'll have some at the Sand District meeting.
Thank you.
Dave?
Mr. Mayor, it's a little unusual that you might offer a public comment on, but I think you guys have been talking about it a little bit. It might be an opportunity if members of the public have any questions about Mr. Herbert's presentation.
Well, I suppose this isn't really a give and take, but if a member of the public has a comment they would like to make on this presentation, we'd be happy to accept that. Seeing none? All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. Notice to the public?
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. Completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on our future agenda for discussion, action or report.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes. Earlier today, I met a friend at 19th and Bay, and it was just remarkable to see an excellent example of government working very well, and that is our, the dredging equipment that's been deployed for the Rhine Channel. And the project is ahead of schedule. It's slated to be completed December 31st, and it's looking like it's going to come in by Thanksgiving. And it's really something that the City worked very long and hard at with other regulatory agencies, with quite a bit of laws and environmental conditions. And so we're very pleased that the Rhine will be completed. And then, within the last 10 days, the United States Army Corps of Engineers released the bid for the Lower Bay dredging. And the company that was a successful bidder is affiliated with the company doing the Rhine dredging. And so that means there'll be some efficiencies with mobilizing that area. And then, secondly, I've been taking a look at our website and some opportunities to improve transparency. And when you look at transparency, it's displaying information to the public in a way that's easily available. So for example, when you go to a bank and they give you $100, they count out, deliberate display, $5, $20. And so in looking at the City of Anaheim website, and actually the City Attorney directed me to that, the way that they organize their contracts is very user-friendly. And so I have spoken with the City Clerk, and she informed me that we are undergoing some reorganization of our own website. And in my efforts to improve transparency and accessibility to the public, I have an ally in the staff in that they have also found the way that the information is organized is difficult to access and has created problems for a variety of departments, including accounts payable. The question that I have is, within a contract that was very difficult to find because it's under the name of an entity that isn't really performing the work, is our environment, is our economic development consultant? And apparently, this work is for an assessment. I think some of us, if not all of us, met with the consultant, as did other members of the community. And then from those interviews, apparently they're going to synthesize the information. I'm wondering when that assessment will be complete so that the council, you know, we can do some policymaking on economic development and when that information, when that contract will be completed. Is there kind of a timeline here?
I'd have to get back with you on that, Councilmember Daigle. You're referring to Cindy Nelson's contract?
Right.
Yeah. Our Assistant City Manager is off on vacation, gets back next week, and she's been working on that project. So I'll report back to you and to the full council when she gets back.
Okay. Because I think it's been going on for about six months or so. So if we could get that, I think that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curry?
Thank you. Last week, I was privileged to participate in the grand opening of the Vineyard Vines Store in Fashion Island. Vineyard Vines is a very popular clothing store, beachwear store from the East Coast, from Antucket and Martha's Vineyard and the New England Seaboard. This is their first and only west coast location, so I encourage you all to drop in and check it out. They're going to be a great addition to Fashion Island and to the Newport Beach community. This morning, I was privileged to participate with several other elected officials from Orange County in the fifth annual Gift of History event at Anaheim Stadium. This was, this is going into Guinness Book of World Records as the largest history lesson ever taught. We had 20,000 third graders in Anaheim Stadium, and we talked about the history of Orange County. And we used a standoff Lee's book, Nothing Rhymes with Orange, which tells some great stories about our county. And we saw some very enthusiastic third graders learning about Orange County, and it was great to see, and it was great to be part of that. On a more serious note, I think we've all noted, because it's been broadcast now around the world, the vandalism of the Reagan Memorial. This was a sad and tragic assault on our community. Staff is evaluating with the artist and her staff the most effective ways of repairing the damage so that the memorial can be reinstated. I've asked staff to explore the most efficient ways of protecting this memorial and all of our public art going forward, and we may or may not discuss the steps that are taken to ensure its safety. We don't know if this was criminal vandalism, this criminal vandalism was an attempt to steal the statue or if it was a politically motivated crime. But in any event, the City will be vigorously pursuing this case and to prosecute the perpetrator to the fullest extent of the law. To assist in the capture of the perpetrator, I am requesting the City Manager in consultation with the Chief of Police to offer a reward of up to $5,000 for information resulting in the arrest and conviction of those responsible. Arresting and convicting the perpetrator will allow us to recover as restitution the higher cost of repairs of the memorial. No matter your political beliefs, we as a community stand together in condemning this cowardly and senseless vandalism. It will not stand in Newport Beach.
All right. Councilmember Selich?
No items.
Councilmember Hill?
No items.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yeah, I'd just like to report on the Coastal Commission hearing that we attended for Sunset Beach Park last week. Sunset Ridge, yeah, Sunset Beach. Might as well be in Sunset Beach, it's not going to be here, it looks like. Sunset Ridge Park, at the Coastal Commission hearing last Wednesday, I attended along with Mayor Hen. We got there about nine o'clock, and our item didn't come on the agenda until about 3:30, 4 o'clock. We wound up at 8:00, basically withdrawing our project because it was clear that the Commission was not going to vote to approve the project. We had kind of sent up a little Hail Mary pass there with an option B that we threw out at the last minute, and that was voted on. It was six to six, and because it was tied, it failed for lack of a majority vote. And so at this point now, the City's reassessing what we're going to do with regard to the park, whether to resubmit with other options or other alternatives or to sit on it for a while. But it was quite distressing, actually, to sit there and listen to people bash our park. You know, we thought we were trying to do something good for the community, for the kids here, and unfortunately Coastal Commission and staff of Coastal Commission didn't see it that way. So hopefully, we can come back with some alternative that they will feel is worthy of their approval. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
The, there's a public dock at the Balboa Marina, and it has been a subject of some controversy, particularly from residents of Linda Isle who live nearby and have complained about the noise late at night. And tomorrow night, at the Harbor Commission meeting, which is in this room at 6:00, we will be looking for the first time at a proposal to move that to an area that wouldn't be nearly as uncomfortable for residents. And so we'll be looking at that, the Harbor Commission, then later at the Tylenol's Management Committee meeting before it comes to council for review at some point. I just, I'm uncomfortable with the reward, simply because we have so many crimes in this city that take place, and we don't set out a reward for them. And I'm wondering if maybe this is, rather than taking out the general fund, this is something that might come from some of us contributing some of our-
I'd contribute half of it from my council account. Be happy to do that, Councilmember.
Yeah, okay.
That it? I'd be happy to make a contribution as well. So perhaps we can do this without general fund monies. With regard to announcements, I have a few. I was able to attend the Exchange Club charity movie opening of Anonymous at the Lidl Theater on October the 27th. It was a very well-attended event. That's a great organization that does a lot of good around our city, and it was nice to support. The movie was good, too. I also had the chance to attend the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County elected officials' presentation on November the 3rd. There were presentations on seven major projects that the, that MODOC is involved with, and so that was a very educational event, too. And then, on, I was able to attend last Saturday, the St. James Church 70th anniversary. It's nice to see enduring institutions here in Newport Beach, and certainly, St. James Church is one of those, although not without its difficulty to endure. We wish them well. And then, coming up, we have the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meeting, the next one, which takes place on November the 10th at 4:00 p.m. in the council chambers. And then, also, the following week, the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel on November the 15th at 4:00 p.m. That takes place in the Nautical Museum. And then, on November the 16th, the Tytland's Management Committee meets at Oasis. That, too, is at 4:00 p.m. I encourage as many members of the public as possible to attend these meetings there. We're doing important work here to move forward, projects for the benefit of our city as a whole. Okay. And with that, we can move on to Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 13, are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent, consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay. Councilmember Hill, any items to pull?
None.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
None.
Councilmember Daigle?
Item number nine and number 12.
And Councilmember Curry?
No items.
Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
And I have none. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item from Consent Calendar? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move items 1 through 13, with the exceptions of nine and 12.
Second. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Anything to read to us this evening?
I'm happy, happy to announce no, sir.
Oh, I'll miss that. Okay. Then let's move on to items pulled. Item number nine, Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, this is a, a project for alley replacement, and I was, I noticed that significant funds came out of the Water Enterprise Fund, and it isn't clear the nexus between replacing an alley and the, and, which is, appears to be a concrete overlay and, and how, you know, what the nexus is with the Water Enterprise Fund.
Councilmember Daigle, usually when we do those projects, I do see Steve back there can answer it better than I can, we will take the, the opportunity to go ahead and replace the lines, the water and wastewater lines underneath that project. So, if they're, if they're close to us being needing, needing to repair them anyway, so that way we don't have to re-rip up the streets again. So that's typically what those charges are for.
Okay, so the, whoever the contractor is that did the alley replacement also repaired the, the pipes?
Actually, there was another contract that was left.
Okay.
So, actually, it's not working.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the project, actually, before the Assessment District work went in, we did some alley water work, and then it was temporarily patched, then the Underground District went in, they did their work, and then, now we've got a brand-new alley, and hopefully, we don't have to dig it up again for a long, long time.
Okay. So you have a brand-new alley, $931,000, but the, and you indicated that there was a, simultaneously, a contract let for these, this Water Enterprise Fund work, and where, is that contract gonna be reported, or how does that?
I think that contract was previously finalized out and notice completion already filed. So we could, we could find that information for you if you're interested in seeing it.
Okay.
But yes, there was a project.
When you have a contract of that amount, which is $200,000, wouldn't that be finalized with the council, sort of as this is, too?
Yes, and it probably was.
Okay.
It just doesn't happen at the same time.
Oh, it's, okay.
Like I said, this project probably occurred, I'm not sure of the date, it probably, could have been as much as a year ago, or maybe two years ago, when we did the actual waterline work.
Okay.
You know, and then the, the Assessment District work happened, which, you know, is not necessarily a quick process. And then, once that was done, we took monies from all of those funds that we had set aside to help do the alley. So in, in a lot of respects, we've kind of leveraged all of those issues together to get the, to get a really good deal to, to repave all the alleys, so we end up with a nice new, clean alley.
Okay. So we have in our documents that $200,000 worth of pipe work was done that we could justify as billable to the Water Enterprise Fund?
Yeah, I think that was the, what, the amount that's shown there is, is the money that would have been used to repave that trench when the waterline work was done. So what happened when the waterline work was done, we just patched it back with temporary asphalt, because we knew the Assessment District work was gonna come in right after and tear it up again. So there's no sense putting concrete back in.
Right.
So we took that amount of money, that equivalent amount of money, out of the water fund to be used later on. So, each portion, the Assessment District, plus the water fund, plus general fund, paid for a sliver of that alley based upon their share.
Okay, maybe, I don't quite understand that. So how does the water share, how is that split up, that the water share is assigned a third?
Well, let's say, let's say we were just gonna do a water project, okay? We would bid it out, and we would have to put the concrete back in over where that waterline trench would have been. So what we didn't, what we did was, we didn't put the, the concrete back, we just put temporary back. We preserved that money for a future project, which is this project. So we leveraged all of those things that needed to happen in order to accomplish the total replacement.
But, but the point is, the, the cost of the alley work was prorated amongst the various projects. Each project picks up its pro-rata share of the alley work.
Of the alley work, yes. Does that explain it? We can show you.
Okay.
You know, if you wanna stop by, we can pull out the project, so we can show you how we do that.
I understand. I would kinda see it as there would seem to be a significant amount of sort of water work done, that would, we're billing sort of water rate people.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm sensitive that we've increased the water rates.
Yeah.
I didn't support that, but people are paying more, homeowners associations are paying more, and I, that's, so, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other council comment on this item?
Move the item.
All right. Do we have public comment on this item? Seeing none?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number 12, Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, these are the arts grant, and some months ago, we had a spirited discussion about, you know, who was gonna get what, what allocation, and, you know, we kinda have this special events, kind of a whatchamacallit committee, whatever that one's called, and it was assigned, it was recommended that the Film Festival would get a certain amount, and then that was increased. And so now, I've noticed another $6,000 for the Film Festival, and I'm wondering if there is a budget presented, or how you arrived at that request.
Maybe Cynthia, you wanna come up and talk about how that process works?
I'm Cynthia Cowell, the Director of the Library, and I wanted to put you in touch with the person who actually chaired the meeting to make those decisions, and that's Robin Grant, the Chair of the Arts Commission.
And I'll stand by to help if you need it. Stand by. Hi, I'm Robin Grant. I'm the Chair of the Arts Commission for the city of Newport Beach. And, can you repeat your question?
Yes, we had given, the council had given substantial funds to the Film Festival for other, for purposes of running the festival, and the festival does have full-time staff members that are paid, and so I noticed another $6,000, and it's for a one-day seminar. Are those the actual costs of the seminar, or what is the $6,000 for?
Well, maybe I should take it back a step and just mention the grants process and how we go about that, and actually, what occurred at the meeting, and how we come to the actual suggestion that the council make the grants. Annually, the council provides money to the Arts Commission and asks for a recommendation about grants that we can make to organizations that participate in the city of Newport Beach, offering services that, you know, we find to be valuable. So, city staff assists the Arts Commission in pursuing grant proposals from different, mostly nonprofits, or I think all nonprofits, in and around Orange, Newport Beach and Orange County, to provide services. And we usually get between 10 and 15 proposals from different nonprofit organizations, and annually, we come to you and make a recommendation. And since I've been on the Arts Commission, which is, I'm two years into my second term, it's always been sort of an easy process, and you guys have seemed very amenable to the recommendations that we've made. We've been granting to the Film Festival the entire time that I've been on the Arts Commission, and typically, it's for a special event within the actual Film Festival. So, we don't look at the overall funding, that's not part of our, you know, proposal package, that they tell us any other funding that they're receiving necessarily from the city. I mean, we do know about it in, within the process, but we sort of base our criteria on three main factors, which are, one, that it be not operational, but project-oriented or programming-oriented services that are being provided; two, that it serves, that the, the grants that we make in general serve the community as a whole, and not just one segment of the community; and three, the amount served by each particular proposal. So we don't want a lot of money going to something that maybe is gonna just serve a couple of people. So, the arts, the Film Festival did make a very nice proposal to us, we went over it at the Arts Commission level. We did discuss, to a certain extent, that they do get other funding from the city, and we decided to go ahead and recommend a grant of $6,000 to fund that particular event. The event itself cost quite a bit more, and they asked for more as well. I think they asked for a total of, it might have been 10,000 or 12,000, I can look that up, but we assessed that 6,000 would be sufficient for participation from the Film Fest, for the cost.
Right. Well, I, first, I appreciate all your volunteerism and, and putting all this together.
Thank you.
And that was kind of the essence of my question, too, is you, you mentioned that, you know, the criteria doesn't include operational costs, and the actual cost of that one-day seminar is $6,000?
It's actually in excess of $6,000. It's industry-specific, and I think their costs are a little bit higher. We do have a breakdown that we could provide to the council, if you wanted to see the actual breakdown. I have the entire proposal with me, and I could go through that with you. When I say that it's, that the money goes not to, they don't go, money should not go to general operations for the, you know, it doesn't go to pay salaries for the general organization, it only goes towards program, that particular programming. So if there is operational costs associated with that particular programming, yes, but not to, the, organizations can't make a request for just operational costs. They have to have a program in specific that they want to provide to the community.
Okay. So do they rent a room, or, I mean, I, I'm just having a hard time.
They rent a room, they hire a speaker, they have costs associated with bringing the speaker in. They, you know, they're generally bringing somebody at least from Los Angeles, sometimes it's, you know, at this point, we don't know exactly who it's gonna be or what it's gonna be, but it is specific to that particular lecture that the money goes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Robin?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I could add some illumination here. I've attended many of these events. Aaron Sorkin last year, who was the producer of West Wing and Social Network, did a presentation here on Saturday at the Lido Theater, one of the most interesting and well-attended of the entire Film Festival, and it was a fabulous program. I was present with Mark Shuman, who was at the old Twin Palms venue over at the, at the Island Hotel. And it was also a very interesting and delightful evening with people who are very specifically involved in, in television and television music, in the case of Mr. Shuman, for decades. And it's one of the real highlights of the festival, and I think it's one of the best things that they do. And, you know, we, we don't give our Arts Commission a lot of money to make these decisions, and I think they spend it wisely, certainly with this expenditure, in terms of the quality the programming that's provided.
Councilmember Rosansky, did you have anything?
Just, if you could tell us, how does it compare to past grants? I mean, is this more or less, about the same?
It's actually lower. We, in the past, in my recollection from being on the Arts Commission, we were giving them about twice that amount originally, and, you know, we've struggled with that, because we do find them to be a very high-caliber provider of services in our community. That's not to say that the other grants that we recommend aren't high-caliber, but this is, I mean, you're all associated with the Film Festival, it's just a different sort of thing. It brings a lot of very sophisticated industry people here, they engage a lot with the universities. I mean, it's a different kind of thing than we ordinarily get grant requests for. They're all valuable services that are being provided. It's just the caliber of what they're doing costs a little bit more. You know, you can see that, for example, the Nautical Museum is doing sea tails, and they're doing it for $2,000, a grant from us, and they're providing services to, you know, preschool children. It's a different kind of a thing. To make any kind of contribution to the Film Festival, they're, they're asked, they were, I think they were the ones that asked for the most money, and, and, you know, that's why we come to that, you know, higher number compared to anybody else.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Robin.
Sure.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none?
Don't move the item.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
And I would just note, I'd like, I won't be supporting it, because I'd like to see a more consolidated approach with how we're awarding money to the Film Festival and other groups.
Okay. Please vote.
With Councilmember Daigle voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. That dispenses with the consent calendar. It's now time for public comment.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. I see Assemblyman Don Wagner in the audience. Don, did you wish to make a comment to us? Welcome to Newport Beach.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and, and councilmembers. I am privileged to know all of you, but I did wanna come in at least, say publicly what I think I have had the opportunity to say privately to all of you. And typically, when you have your meetings, I'm up in Sacramento. Fortunately, we are off for a couple of weeks now, and we'll be off through the Christmas holidays, so I'm back in town. And I wanted to take the opportunity to come by and make sure you know that my office and my staff and I are here to do what we can, to help you with the constituents we share. I am privileged, obviously, to represent Newport Beach, and God willing, for the next year will, I pledge to do so diligently, vigorously, and ask for your help as well in, in doing what we can to serve our common constituents. One request I would make of you, and of anyone at home who might be watching this, in January, we go back into session, let me know what specifically there is, either in the law, or any of the various codes or regulations, that we can do to maybe get the state off your back a little bit, maybe help get some people back to work, maybe do some things to make your life a little bit easier. That's one of my goals in the coming year, and I solicit all of your help in doing so, Councilman Rosansky.
Yeah, I'd support a bill decommissioning the Coastal Commission, right about now.
I, I hear you. That might be a little bit of a, of a tall order.
Hey, you're a tall guy.
Specifics, specifics, I, I encourage you to, to let me know what we can do. But anyway, thank you all. I won't take up any more of your time, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
Oh, thank you, Assemblyman Wagner, for the great job you're doing.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thanks so much, Don. Nice to see you. Okay. Other public comment? Seeing none? We're on to oral re, whoop, excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Alicia Koberstein, Newport Coast. The last time I was here, I used my entire allotted three minutes talking to you about why I think it would behoove the council to adopt the ordinance banning the retail sale of companion animals in our city. Tonight, I will keep my address brief. By now, I'm sure you've been provided with a wealth of thoroughly researched and well-documented information, expounding the compelling reasons to enforce such a ban. But if you'd like more, we have it. For now, in the interest of time and not being redundant, I will simply say that I beseech you to please place this matter on your agenda. Of the many weighty issues that come before you, this should be an easy one. Newport Beach really has nothing to lose by doing so, and actually, has much to gain. Yes, the argument to do away with traditional pet stores is one that is emotionally charged and fueled by passion, but it is also one that is of sound reason, and I encourage you to give it the due consideration it merits. It would be impressive to see Newport Beach conduct itself in alignment with the values it purports to hold. I'm looking forward to the day in the near future when we can proudly claim I'm looking forward to the day in the near future when we can proudly claim that Newport Beach has joined the ranks of the ethically-evolved legion of cities who have adopted humane business practices, not just for the sake of the non-human animals directly affected by such, but for the human ones as well. Your citizens are enthusiastically behind this effort, and I know I speak for many of them when I urge you to place this issue banning the retail sale of animals on your agenda. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to our next meeting. Good night.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, council members. My name's Kelly Sawyer. I'm a citizen of Newport Beach. I wanted to first thank you for taking a stand on the vandalism property. We regard our, you know, it's city property, and it's memorial, and Ronnie was my favorite. And so, I'm really glad to see you taking an aggressive stance on that. So, thank you. I did want to clear up, or just maybe reiterate, my presentation from a couple of weeks ago. You probably remember the USDA photos. And although they were shocking with animal cruelty and animal torture, it, the purpose of them and the purpose of the Inspector General report is to detail and describe the lack of regulation in the industry. The Inspector General has detailed flaws of training in the USDA officers, the lack of standards in the industry which violate the Animal Welfare Act, and basically its complete lack of regulation. It is not against the Animal Welfare Act to breed an animal to death. It's not against USDA standards either. Without getting too into it, you know, a common practice in, in commercial breeding is called thumping. It's when the puppies that are too sickly from breeding dogs are not going to survive, they thump it against the wall or with their heels. This is the kind of industry that our city is supporting. It's common knowledge. I would very, very much like to see us take an aggressive stance against the retail sale of puppy mill dogs. I will go ahead and read a definition of puppy mill. A puppy mill is a large-scale commercial breeding dog operation where profit is given priority over the well-being of the dogs. Puppy mill, puppies are typically sold to pet shops, usually through a broker or middleman, and marketed as young as eight weeks of age. The lineage records of puppy mill dogs are often falsified. Now, all the puppies right now currently at Russo's and iHeartPuppies are all from the Midwest. They're all maybe, when they first get into the store, they're just over eight weeks, a day or so. Suzanne Bradford stated last meeting she has her puppies flown or driven to her. While we have pictures of all of the cages with the cities and where these puppies are coming from, they're Nebraska, Oklahoma, Missouri. To say that we're not selling puppy mill dogs in Newport Beach is, is not really a rational conclusion. The Humane Society of the United States and its 11 million members have offered its full support to each council member, I'm trying to remember now, in support of an ordinance. We applaud recognition-
Kelly, your time, your time is up.
Okay. I think it's a fantastic opportunity, not only for the city council members, but the mayor, to have the support of the Humane Society and national recognition to glorify our city and its citizens. I think it's, it's really important. That's all I wanted to say, 'cause I'm a little offbeat, but thank you for your time as usual.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
It's nice to meet you all in person. I've seen your pictures on many of postcards before and what have you on the day of voting, so it's a nice opportunity to be here.
And may we have your name, sir? Your name, sir, please.
Yes. I also filled out the card for you as well. My name is Earl Halliburton. Our family and myself have been residents of the Newport Beach and Cronomar areas prior to them both being one city and such for about 55 years, sir. We've held several residences in the area and have felt a part of the community. It's a jewel. We appreciate what past councils, as well as you all and you, Mr. Mayor, have done for the area, to continue to make it a jewel and prove it so that, again, I don't know of another place in the world that rivals our area. And so, again, thank you very much for the time and effort you've put forward. As a sidebar issue, I'd like to mention also that if you possibly could put an article in our local paper with a phone number and an address, I also have been moved in hearing about the Reagan statue, and would like to make a contribution myself. So, if we're all furnished through some media outlet, a place we could send a check, we'd like to do that. The issue I'm here this evening for, is that too loud? About right? Thank you. Is in support of the iHeart Puppy Store located in Cronomar on PCH. For the last few weeks, I've had the opportunity in going online and seeing a couple of the meetings and the store being beset by those who have disagreed with it remaining in business. I was here two weeks ago and had the opportunity to hear again the accusations and such against the store. I have been a customer of the store. I have had the opportunity to meet the owner and her children, as well as some of the local families that I know whose children also work there part-time. I think it's tragic that they've been beset through acquisition, pardon me, accusation and innuendo, all quite unfounded. And I, I think that until such time, again, that maybe the council would like to bring this issue up. I, I know the owner wants to mend over backwards to offer to you a list of those places and what have you. She has been purchasing her animals. She went out of her way to visit, get to know, and build relationships with those people that she has been buying her animals from, and I think you can only guess that they're of the highest quality. I suggest any or all of you, please, visit the facility. And to be frank, I think it's on par with some of the finer veterinarian clinics we have in the city as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes. Once a month, our Citizens Aviation Committee meets at the library, and we cover a lot in an hour. And Councilman Hill and Councilman Curry also serve on the committee. And we have quite a bit of staff support with our city attorney and our city manager present. We also have a consultant, so this is an issue that the city takes very seriously. And we did cover a number of topics. We, first of all, there was a request of the county airport to have the FAA attend or address a meeting, our Citizens Aviation Committee, and the county airport administrator agreed to take that request to the FAA. And in the past, he was able to secure commitment from the FAA to come talk to us about our issues, so we appreciate that. We also, the city had sent a letter to the county concerning Strel. As you may have read and heard, there's been concern in our community about the impacts of, of new departure procedures. And the county is responding, or they did, in fact, already respond to that letter. So, maybe that's something, too, we could post on our website. And let's see what else. And then the county reported to us that they have been in discussions with the FAA. And the FAA is the entity that controls the airspace, it's not the city, and it's not the airport, and that after two years of testing and modifications, it's the FAA's view that the Strel follows the historical departure paths and dispersion and would correctly remain as designed. So, the basic message is, it doesn't appear that the FAA is considering any changes at this stage. It was also reported that noise data at noise monitor seven is about the same as at historical levels. We had also operational updates. The airport noted that passenger levels increased a little for September 2011 versus 2010, and that JWA is on schedule for approximately 8.6 million passengers this year will go through the gates. The Board of Supervisors today approved an incentive program for international flights to and from Mexico. And as the airport director explained to us at the meeting, I think there's about $900,000 in rebates given to the, the Mexican airlines to come to JWA to occupy space in the new terminal. And that it was confirmed that any flights in and out of the airport will be required to meet the noise standards as established by the county noise ordinance, as well as the JWA settlement agreement. And finally, the complete monthly aviation update is prepared and distributed by the city and can also be accessed on the city's website. There's a lot of questions at the city from residents, many of the same questions, so we have posted on the website those questions and answers. And our next meeting is Monday, November 28th. So, we cover a lot in these meetings, and again, I really want to thank our staff for their support. It takes quite a bit of work to prepare for these meetings and to handle all the issues that, that our residents bring up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
The Finance Committee met on Monday, and I, much of what we discussed will be covered in the report of the quarterly business report coming up, so I won't dwell on much of it, other than to say that our revenues are on target for this year. Our pension costs are slightly higher, or higher as we had anticipated that they, that they would be. We did consider a request and consented for a potential refunding of the debt associated with the Bonita Canyon CFD, which is market-dependent. It may, it fluctuates whether it will actually be done or not based on market conditions, but if so, could result in some CFD tax savings for those who live in Bonita Canyon. And that's my report.
Okay. Councilmember Selig?
Tomorrow at 4:00, the West Newport Landscaping Citizens Advisory Committee will be meeting here in the council chambers, and the committee will be looking at the alternative concepts for, I shouldn't say alternative concepts, but proposed concepts for the Superior Avenue from where the existing landscaping ends up by Hoag Hospital down to Coast Highway and West Coast Highway from the San Ana River to the Newport Boulevard Bridge and Balboa Boulevard from Coast Highway down to the Mixmaster. And if anyone's interested and can't attend the meeting, you can go on the city's website, and these plans are posted on the city's website to take a look at them. And tomorrow will be the first chance for the committee to take a look at these plans after three meetings of going through background and technical data. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hill?
Yes. On the 27th of October, just two days after our last city council meeting, the Lido Village CAP met for its final meeting in accordance to its schedule, completed its work with the assemblage of the design guidelines for Lido Plaza. And, and those design guidelines, which brought together the information generated during the sequence of meetings by the CAP, the public input during those meetings, as well as the community meeting that was a very successfully-held meeting in Lido Village, and comments from the Planning Commission, all brought together. And that document will now go to the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, which will meet this Thursday, November the 10th, in this room at 4:00 in the afternoon. And so, everyone that is interested in Lido Village is certainly welcome to attend. And based upon the desire of the ad hoc committee, a recommendation will then be formed to bring forth to the council and complete this part of the exercise of moving forward with the revitalization of the Lido Village area.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosansky?
On schedule, on budget.
Nothing, thank you. Mayor for Tim Gardner?
Nothing.
I had two quick notes. The Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel actually held two meetings. The first was a regular business meeting at, on October the 26th at 4:00 p.m. We did discuss what we believe, for now, is a good vision statement for the Balboa Village, and that'll be subject to review as we go along, though, and develop further information. We also looked at the, something called Project 2000, which is the whole series of recommendations for improvement of the peninsula that were made in 2000. And people, I think, have lost sight of the fact that quite a few of those recommendations have actually been acted upon. And we reviewed those, as well as the ones that had not been acted upon, and considered all of those recommendations, and those will be folded into our work going forward here. From here on, we'll be focusing most immediately on parking. And so, that, that group will have some lively discussions, I'm sure, over the next meeting or two. We also met with the Balboa Village property owners. We scheduled a separate meeting of the Citizens Advisory Panel to meet with the property owners. That was at 8:00 in the morning here on November the 3rd. We unfortunately did not get a very good turnout to that meeting, despite the fact of having outreach to, to as many of the property owners as we could identify. That was somewhat disappointing, but we did get some good input from the ones that did show up, and we'll consider that as we go forward. And we made a commitment that we would re-establish that property owner outreach when we get a little farther down the line and perhaps have more to report to them and for them to think about and comment on as the Citizens Advisory Panel completes its work. So, that, that panel is moving along well and still has quite a bit of work to do. And once again, we certainly invite as much public participation and comment to that process as we can get. Okay. That completes the City Council Committee reports. We're on to public hearings and the transfer of development rights for North Newport Center.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the council. We have tonight a public hearing to consider an application to, to move some unbuilt development potential in Newport Center, and the applicant is the Irvine Company. We have representatives from the Irvine Company to give a presentation. But before that, we, Assistant Planner for Nueno is going to give an overview of the proposal.
For Nueno. This project is within the North Newport Center Planned Community. The light gray here, you can see, is the property boundaries, and the ones in yellow are the three blocks that are involved in the transfer. The Irvine Company is proposing to transfer square footage from San Joaquin Plaza and Block 600 into Block 500, and then relocate 430 dwelling units from Block 500 into San Joaquin Plaza. The general plan and the planned community development plan allow for the transfer as long as the transfer is trip-neutral and it is in conformance with the general plan, which it is. The city did retain StanTech Consulting to prepare the traffic analysis, which showed that it was not only trip-neutral, but that there was actually a reduction of 83 peak trips. And because of this recommendation, staff is recommending approval. The Irvine Company is here, as well as Joe Faust from the Traffic Consulting Company, if you have any questions.
Okay. Questions? Mayor for Tim Gardner?
Have you made up your mind? I mean, I'm just looking like it's, it's 4:30's in, 4:30's out, 4:30's in.
This does seem like Groundhog Day, doesn't it?
Dan, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dan Meller with the Irvine Company. Yes, again, I, I think we were constraining Block 500 for the units, but the issue there is that the parking situation, though we own the parking land, there are some individual ownerships on the outward part of Block 500, and they have certain rights, and it just became problematic to try to bring residential into that area. So, office activity in Block 500 makes more sense. And now that we have perfected our design on the type of units- design on the type of units, San Joaquin Plaza makes more sense there, so we are moving forward with final design on those units, and we hope to be in pulling a permit later next year.
I'll believe it when I see it.
You're gonna see it. I will guarantee that. We're not coming back from where transfers are done.
So when the music stops, we should look for a permit to be pulled, isn't it?
Yes, yes. We are done. This is the last one. But fortunately, the thing we worked out with the city in terms of allowing us to do the master planning and moving this around as long as it's traffic-neutral allows us to look at a lot of different scenarios, and it's been very helpful to us and allows us to move forward and make sure it does happen.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Do we have any other council comment? Okay.
Got a question for the staff.
Sure.
I don't know, either Kim or Aaron. We're calling this transfer of development rights because we have a development agreement, correct? Because otherwise it would be transfer of development intensity. Am I saying that correctly?
Councilmember Selig, that is correct, and it's a nuance, but it's a very important nuance, and this is a vested development right that the Irvine Company...
Well, the reason I bring it up is there are potentially other people claiming development rights when it's really development intensity that they have allocated to their properties.
That is correct.
As you said, it's a nuance, but can be a big difference legally.
It is a very important distinction. That is correct.
I'll move the action.
All right. Do we have public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any other questions? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read Resolution Number 2011-102, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving transfer of development rights number TD 2011-001 in the North Newport Center Planned Community, and with that, the motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the master fee schedule. However, I see where we're intending to continue that. Is that right, Dave?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So I guess unless you would care to comment on this, we'll accept a motion to continue this item.
No need to comment. Unless you have questions.
Leave to continue?
Second.
To a date certain of November the 22nd. Is there any council comment on this? Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
That brings us to the quarterly business report. Dave?
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I won't spend too much time with this, but I also don't want to shortchange it. This is now probably the third or fourth time you've seen the quarterly business report. It does have a detailed year-end close discussion in the financial section, which is the front section for folks at home, or certainly for the council. It has a thorough discussion, fairly thorough discussion, of our revenues and expenditures to date, including our, how each department is performing, as well as a section on our investments, how our investments are performing, and then there's some interesting pages there about our pensions. And as Mr. Curry mentioned, this is something the Finance Committee has gone through and vets fairly carefully, but for readers at home, I think it's an interesting document, especially that financial section. And then you get through the last, the next two sections gives the community and the council an update on what each committee or commissioner board is working on, and I like this tool because it helps you see the latest, hopefully the latest, at least before we go to print, as well as if someone has a question about the staff or the resolution that authorized it or the membership, that's on there and hopefully accurate. And then again, the last section, I'm going to highlight just a couple of projects. The last section is about projects. You'll see, for instance, one that we've worked on a long time about the fire hazard in Buck Gully, and we did finally get the maps. They arrived in my office last week, I think. Those are the very high and high fire hazard severity zones. Mr. Rozansky talked about Sunset Ridge Park. That's updated as well. So is the Civic Center project, if folks are curious about where that is, and then you'll see each of those revitalization areas summarized, as well as, as Councilmember Daigle noted, the update on the Rhine Channel project. And then I would add just a couple of things. One is that it's been a general goal of the city to try to professionalize things more, and we hope this helps accomplish that. Along those lines, we're trying to look at better ways of doing things, and what I wanted to make sure you knew was, and I might add this maybe as a section, is where we issue or respond to RFPs. We've been talking with Costa Mesa about some of the things they've put out to RFP, for instance, jail operations, dispatch operations. As I think most folks know, we're having a continuing dialogue with Costa Mesa and with Huntington Beach about potentially sharing some services, and they may not be services themselves, but purchasing IT systems, such as, we all need a new dispatch system, and if we could all agree on a template there, we could all save a lot of money, each of those three cities. And I did want to let you know and the community know, too, that tomorrow we'll be posting our own RFP for consultant services associated with refuse, and this is obviously a sensitive issue for the community, but because it, but I think we, just like we've looked at what's happening in police and lifeguards and the rest of the departments, we need to make sure each one of our services is being done efficiency, efficiently, so we're going to be asking for some consultant services to look at what we do and how we do it, along with looking at what other cities do in terms of residential trash collection. That consultant may conclude that we do it really well, and we may do it best and at a good rate, sorry, in a good expense. So that, the selection of that vendor will come back to you. The RFP, however, will be issued tomorrow with the expectation, again, that there'll be a couple of chances for you and for the community to look at that work product before things go further, because I know it's a real, our trash guys are very beloved, and that's obviously a sensitive issue for us. So with that, I'd offer the quarterly business report and welcome your questions and comments.
Mayor for Tim Gardner?
This is online.
It is online.
Would people look under city manager, or where, sometimes these things are not always as easy?
You're gonna listen to the voices to see if I...
To find...
Do you know if it's over your head, Kim? Leilani, maybe?
It's on, under projects and issues.
Okay.
See, so sometimes, they wouldn't think about that, so say it again.
Yeah, we maybe give it a higher profile. It's a good thing. We could work on that tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Selig, did you have a comment? Councilmember Daigle?
I do, and I know one of the things our staff is working on is user interface pages so that you'll be able to navigate some of these areas pretty quickly. So my question, though, is, well, first of all, I appreciate that you'll also be listing some of our RFPs that respond to and shared services with other cities, and I think our style has been to let our staff hash out the details, and that's, I think, been an approach that's worked well and certainly saved the council from a lot of controversy. And then, secondly, with respect to the item on the trash RFP, you know, the industry is very competitive, and no matter what consultant is chosen, you know, a hauler could cry foul in some way. And one thing that I would ask is, in terms of the consultants that make proposals, if you could identify their recent client cities, whether it's the last 10 cities, and which hauler was selected from that city. I'd be interested in seeing that information as part of the proposals when they come back.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comment regarding the quarter business report. I had a couple of comments. First off, I regard this as a very valuable document. I've encouraged all of the homeowner associations in my district at least to read this every time it comes out, and I believe most of them do and consider it at their executive committee levels or board meetings, and so there's an awful lot in here that's really of import and interest, actually. Also, I did note in here that the ad hoc committee for group homes, apparently the terms of the council members have expired, although the committee apparently doesn't have an expiration date. So I think we do, we do pull that group together from time to time to consider issues, and I'm just suggesting there's maybe a cleanup item there that we ought to address when we get a little...
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk suggested that, too, so we do need to bring something back to you to formalize that more appropriately.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
In exchange for Councilman Rozansky's insurance that I got my picture taken this evening, I would like to put in a request so that he might have one of these reports as well.
He didn't get one?
All right. Do we have any comments from the public regarding the quarterly business report? Seeing none, we will move on to motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Anyone wish to reconsider? Seeing none, we're adjourned.
Dad, you finally earned your strike.